Welcome to the Eugene City Council Work Session for September 18th. Before we get into the content of the meeting, I wanted to share with you on Monday, I went up to Salem where for the governor to sign this bill, which is our Business Accelerator Bill that has to do with the OSU and Corvallis and Eugene and U of O having business accelerators in both communities, and we got some wonderful funding from the legislature to get these things going, and so we got the official seal and the official sign the bill pen from the governor.
Souvenir from the governor.
That'll go into our new City Hall, right?
I thought you might like to see that, since it's your honor. Okay, so it's the Council Vision, Goals, and Outcomes and Process Session today. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'll be sort of leading the charge here this afternoon, and of course Christie's here and Mia is available as well. And just to kind of set the stage for the conversation, as we've been going through the, really, the budget and the Budget Committee over the last many months, one of the things that has come up is the importance of reaffirming or affirming the goals and outcomes that the council has established over the last couple of years. I'm going to talk a little bit about how we got there. So as the Budget Committee does their work this year, they know that the council has still said, "This is what's important to us." And so today really is just an opportunity to try to do that with also knowing that as we move into January or February with your annual workshop, that our intent would be is to have a more extensive review of the, or an opportunity to review these if you choose to do that, similar to what we do every couple of years. And so really today is an opportunity to say, "Yeah, this is where we are. There's nothing significant that we would change," or if there is, "This would be a great time to talk about that as well," be able to feed that back to the Budget Committee, and then they can use that as part of their work going forward as we set strategies for the FY15 budget. So that's really what we're wanting to do today and try to answer some questions with that. And just as a reminder of how we got here several years ago, you know, the council, of course, for years and years and years have had visions and goals and outcomes. This most recent round was as a result of a lot of extensive outreach into the community with Eugene Counts. And that was an effort to not only quantitatively but qualitatively get a sense of where the community wanted to focus some efforts, at least at that time, and then going forward for the next couple of years. And there was a conversation and an agreement that this doesn't represent everything that we do in the city or in the organization, nor is there intent to try to provide everything that goes on in the city underneath one of these particular goals or outcomes, but what is it that the community really thinks about when they think about safe community or sustainable development? What are those outcomes that will let them know that we're being successful with that, and then let's work towards those outcomes? A good example is "safe community." They said, "We want to decrease property crime, get a greater sense of safety, especially in the downtown, visible and accessible police presence, and better police and community relations." Now, that doesn't mean they don't have an interest in how well our fire and EMS department operates and responds. Of course they do. As we went through the Eugene Counts process and engaged over 1,000 citizens, what they said is this is how they would start measure success at that time when it comes to safe community. And so, of course, you and the staff and the Budget Committee have been working towards these, and that's reflected in the budget conversations and really the kinds of things that have been going on in the community for the last several years. And so that's a little bit of the background of how we've got to here. And then, again, wanting to just get some affirmation around these, and then with the next expectations, we move into January, February, there'll be a more extensive conversation as well. So, Mayor, we can go through any of the specifics if you would like, or just be available to answer questions.
Do you have an update on Eugene Counts about how we're doing on these goals?
So, the last time that I think we did a formal update to council was in February 2012, and each department, we came back and some of the executive team members talked about the different ones, and we haven't done an update back to you all since then. And I don't have off top of mind, you know, the most recent updates that have been done on Eugene Counts. I'd have to look at that.
Well, I guess my comment would be that I think it would be valuable for us to either be reminded or have some update on how we think we're doing on the goals that we have at hand. And I guess your question today is more about, are these the goals that we can get through this budget cycle?
Correct.
Mike, did you have something that you wanted to say?
Yes, Mayor, I would. If I understand this, what you're saying is we're going to get to a more in-depth process as we get towards the beginning of the year for perhaps refining this, but this is a check-in with what direction should staff start going to prepare? Is that pretty close?
Yes, and the Budget Committee would also be using this as they go through the deliberations in preparation for FY15.
During the last time we had an all-day Budget Committee discussion of some broader topics, one of the things that I brought up and kind of emphasized is one I hope we're going to get to with this is to refine or shift our focus with vision and values to reflect a more current day reality of our present economic state. I'm hopeful that we look at this and say, "How do we grow more economically prosperous as a community?" And I hope we do that at a more in-depth level than kind of broad, banal sorts of statements about best outcomes, even though I think all of us could do that, and we'd be sincere about saying we all have great hopes for our best outcomes. But I think we need to get a little more specific than that. There's quite a difference between kind of, you know, demand-side economic theory and supply-side economic theory, and how do we actually accomplish something or help the, you know, our local economy succeed most effectively? And I'd just really like to see us focusing more sincerely on that.
Chris?
And I think, for me, why this is valuable is, I think, as we go into a budget process, we need to really understand what our priorities are and where we should focus on. But for me, it's kind of like two big areas and not just one. It's like two big overlapping circles. And there's one that is the operational circle, and that's you have to provide roads, you have to provide police, you have to provide fire. It's those operational things you have to do, either by requirement, by statute, or just by common sense. You need to provide these things. Then there's the other circle, which is the aspirational things. So there's the operational, the aspirational. I think we understand, just through the budgeting process, there are certain operational things we have to fund and have to do. And we can tweak and debate on them, but we pretty much know what we need to do. Where it gets interesting then is when we talk aspirationally, and for me, one of the challenges is when we look at our budget, what portion of our budget left over after we funded the operational pieces is there to do the aspirational part? And so I'm thinking, do we need to talk about how we should balance those amounts of money? I mean, we have an overall half a billion dollar budget, but of that half a billion dollars, the vast majority of it is tied up in required statutory or operational kinds of things. That leaves us a fairly small amount of money that we have to be aspirational with. And so that's why I think it's really important for us to be very clear on what those aspirations are, because we don't have a lot of money to use for that. And if we're not clear on it, then that money can get used up very quickly, and we don't accomplish any outcome. So that's where, for me, where the delicate balance is. We don't have all the money in the world to do these aspirational things. We only have a very limited amount, and so we have to say, "Can we do them all? Would we like to do them all and maybe do them to this level? Should we begin to say, 'Let's only do a few of them to this level'?" I think that's what's really valuable in the conversation is, do we want to do 50 things 5 percent or five things 100 percent? You know, what do we really want to do? How important, and it's not a matter of value, it's just a matter of allocating the resources that we have available for our aspirational goals.
George?
Well, yeah, I just have a question, first of all, is the last Eugene Counts update, is that available on the web?
There's--
February 2012.
The information was provided to--
I probably have it in some folder in my office.
Yeah, there is information about Eugene Counts on the website, and then part of that was just in a council work session and conversation that we had with all of you.
So that wasn't even a year ago. That would probably still be fairly current and still. Yeah, I mean, I guess today we don't really want to do wordsmithing on any of this, but I had kind of just a couple of initial thoughts that are kind of geared towards that. You know, "safe community, greater sense of safety, especially downtown." We could maybe drop the downtown part, because I think we have accomplished the visible and accessible presence downtown, and like under development, increased downtown development, maybe we could drop the downtown part. We've done tons of that. Not to say that we won't continue to, but maybe we could emphasize, you know, like Highway 99 or Trainslaw or somewhere, some other area that could really, really use some economic development. I don't know, we may want to tweak that a little bit. And then the very last one, under, you know, it says newer expanded revenue sources. I guess that'll, I mean, you know, the financial investigative team and the Budget Committee's going to be like, all that, meaning the challenge material and other ideas, so I don't know if it needs to be on this list, because we're, I mean, until we, well, we're going to revisit this in January. Okay, well, that was just some initial thoughts that we may want to make that. We don't know if that's going to be a recommendation actually yet, but by January we should, I guess, so. We'll revisit it then. So this is something that kind of jumped out at me. That's all.
Claire?
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate this chance to kind of have this check-in and also knowing that we'll have a chance to go deeper into maybe revisiting these. I agree with George that this isn't the place for wordsmithing. I do recall then when we had the retreat with council and staff, I think it was in January, that we started to talk about this, and I would like us to bring forward to the next iteration of the conversation, the thoughts that were shared at that meeting around some of these things. Because I think, playing off of what Council Brown was just saying, I agree there could be some less emphasis on downtown and also more emphasis on equity. That's another way to get at the Highway 99 development aspect. And also, maybe, I think I might have suggested at that retreat back in January, adding "safe and healthy community" as, you know, bringing that forward to, as another value that we would want to see in our goals and outcomes. So I look forward to that deeper conversation. I think at this point, for purposes of our Budget Committee right now, I feel like these are still very valid and useful goals and outcomes. I don't see anything that I would take off and say, "Oh, we don't want that there right now." So I'm comfortable with having the Budget Committee use this as a guidepost.
Alan?
So, you know, the thing about vision statement and goal statements is they're quite broad, so they, and they don't have a lot of text around them, so a lot of people can have and think that what they're doing or what they're suggesting is consistent with this. I guess the real value isn't so much that people say that they're consistent, especially when we get into the budget process, but is what we're proposing inconsistent with this? And this does narrow down the scope of things that we want to do and look at. I think that's the more valuable part of this as a tool, is to say that that particular idea is inconsistent with the goals and vision of the city of Eugene. That's kind of, I mean, you have to be kind of, these are broad enough, you have to be pretty far out there to be able to say that. So it doesn't provide us with a great deal of bookends, but it does a little bit.
So I guess what I would say is, when we approach this again, I think we need to be careful to talk about what we think we've made progress on, and that, yes, those things may not show up as our immediate strategies or goals, but that doesn't mean that we don't still have them as things that we value and think are important. But I would say, just for comment that may end up in a budget discussion or not, is that we just had information that our property crimes continue to grow here, so that's still an important aspect of public safety in our community. And I would say probably, along with that, the greater sense of safety is the whole current discussion on homelessness and how, which people aren't safe and which people don't feel safe. And that's two ways of looking at the same issue. So that's still very relevant to us. I think, you know, with our resources and our targeting, our database policing, I think we've been doing a good job of using our resources. That doesn't mean that we think we're doing everything that we should be doing. And I do think with the auditor and the work that the chief has done and all that stuff we've done with working through all the, in a very visible way, all the complaints, I think we have been really building better relations. That doesn't mean we don't have bumps in the, have bumps as we go along, but I applaud everybody who's involved with that around the increased visibility and transparency of our, of that investigatory part of our system. I think it will help build confidence. On development, I think we can see progress with that. I want to remind people that we do have really important strategies around trying to decrease unemployment and create jobs, and we have been following up pretty continually on our regional prosperity plan and made advances, this being one of them. And we did put a whole bunch of strategies in place to try to help small and local businesses, and I think you hear all the time about how that those low-interest loans have really helped people all over the community. And the triple bottom line is still something that we have continually say is an important way for us to look at our decision-making process. I remind us that we have found that our arts and culture is a $45 million piece of our economic development in this community, and we are still working on that. We've had a lot of public engagement, continue to have that, and I think the whole budget process speaks to this, struggling with the fair, stable, and adequate financial resources, and we'll see how we manage that as we go through the budget process. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate what you're saying. I agree with a lot of that. I would add one thing that has kind of been, I've been mulling over for a while. Under the heading of "effective, accountable municipal government," I would wonder if there's an opportunity for us to add to that. We have, and specifically under the effective part, we have a few issues in the community that are difficult, that we struggle with for long periods of time. Homelessness is one of them. We've struggled with what's an appropriate solution to that for a long period of time, sort of longstanding unresolved issues, River Road, Santa Clara, things like that. I would say perhaps searching for innovative solutions to longstanding problems might be something that we could add more focus to under effective municipal government. So that's a line item, I would add.
Or at least you bring up when we change our--
I mean, I think we should bring a higher level of awareness to the idea that we should be constantly looking, we do look for innovative solutions to things, and you and senior staff have done a great job of kind of bringing the idea of innovation to the staff in new ways over the last few years, and I appreciate that. But I think that one could be raised in profile a little bit, that it's needing to focus innovation on longstanding problems that we have, that we could use more for that.
I think this is really important, and, yeah, we should tweak it in whatever ways seem effective and appropriate. A question I always wonder about, though, is if you were to go out into the general community, how many people in the general community even know this exists? So I come back to the notion of-- Ten, at least. Yeah, ten at least, maybe 15. But I do think there is a significant number, but it's not the community as a whole. So it comes back to the question of, how are we being evaluated as a city, as a city government? You know, you would think we should be judged and evaluated based on our vision, our goals, or outcomes. You should judge people on their goals. What is it that they're trying to accomplish? But in reality, more often than not, we're not, you know, judged on what we're doing or what we want to do, we're judged on how we're doing it. And so for me, I think we need to be very conscious, not just as a staff, but also as elected officials, that it's how we do things that, in many cases, become the basis for how we are judged as being good or bad, effective or ineffective. And so a lot of times the complaints I will have from people, of course you get the complaints, "You're doing the wrong stuff, you're focusing on the wrong things." But a lot of those really gut complaints I get from people is how they were treated. "I was treated this way, I was treated that way." A lot of the complaints about the police department have to do with the way people feel they've been treated by the police department, not that they're necessarily enforcing the wrong laws, although we hear that as well. But I think as we talk about this, it has to be talked about in the context of how we're going to do this. What is the process and the system in place that we use to do this, and how we as elected officials also represent that process as well? I used to hate process when I was younger, and I have since learned that process actually is a necessary thing, as long as you don't do it badly. People hate it when you do process badly, but they're very appreciative when you do process well. And I think these goals can only be accomplished through effective process, so we can't ignore the fact that this is important stuff, this is a great list, but it's just a list until you actually start doing it. And that is the process, and that is how people will judge us. So we should look at this from that standpoint, and to me, process in many regards is something that is funded. You fund processes, you fund ways to do things. So this, once again, is just a list until we commit to funding the process to do this stuff well. That's how people will judge us. Well, you say you want to do this, but I don't see you spending any money on it. I don't see you doing anything effective about it. So that's where those two things go together. We have to make sure that we're very conscious of both sides.
Let's say you have an opportunity during this budget process to take the goals out to people and let them know what it is that you've been working on, and then they can ask their questions about it, and you should be able to have the answers to tell them what you've been doing about it. That's got to be part of the discussion, because that leads into the next question, is what do you want to spend money on and what don't you, and all of those kind of things that will be on your plate in the budget process. So I think this, the reason we're looking at this today, maybe you need to think if there's, I mean, really seriously think, instead of just nodding our head, "Oh, yeah, this is okay," is there anything about this that you really want to think about? Do you want to carry it forward into the budget process? And take a real good look at it right now, today, and see if there's anything on here that you want to take off, and is there anything that you want to think about in addition to this during the budget process? So that even if we say, "Yeah, this is pretty much what we're going to do until we have another big, deep discussion coming up," but I would, as you already said, but I would say, "We're doing pretty well on downtown, so maybe we don't put as much of our bucket into downtown." And you have to think about, we have to convey that information. It's not that we think we're totally there, and it's not any less important to us, but we have been making some significant progress on it. Betty?
Thank you. I would like to hear what people would say if they look at this and say, "What do you mean, like accessible and, what does it say about recreation? Accessible to all incomes." If someone goes to the Halt Center, they can't afford the ticket, and then they get there and they find out it costs $5 to park, I think that people might say, "That's not accessible." I think the best thing we've done in that area was the Free Symphony at Cuthbert, but mostly we have great arts and culture, but a lot of it is not accessible to a lot of people. I think this is really short, and I think I'm sure I said that when we created it, I think it's really short on environmental protection. And at one time, we had sustainability instead of sustainable development. I think a lot of things are not sustainable. And even though the county is in charge of Mount Pisgah, I think we should try to use influence to stop that fee. They just raised the fee to $4. People who want to go out to a natural area, which is supported by taxpayer money. I met a man out there once, I may have said this at council before, but he thought I, he wanted my pass, he thought I had a day pass, and I didn't, I have a season pass. But he wanted to, if I was leaving, he wanted my pass. He had brought some children out, wanted to go for a walk, and found out you have to pay. And I didn't have any money with me either, but I just think it's wrong to not, and it's something I think we should be cautious about as we start talking about sources of revenue, some people are going to say more fees. And I think that is really wrong. I think, as Mike knows, I think that government was created to do for us what we can't do individually, and we all pay for things that, you have disputed this sometimes, we all pay for--
Sometimes?
We all pay for things that we don't use, but we pay for things that make a better community. I mean, some of us never go to parks, maybe, but we still, they're still really important to the quality of life. And I think we start thinking about, you need to be really cautious when you start saying, "Pay for what you use." Because I think we, some of us don't go to school anymore, but we need to pay for the schools, and we need to pay for healthcare too, which we're not doing. And I'll stop there.
So my comment on this is that I think what we do with our arts and culture is try to make a full range of arts and culture available and affordable to the vast majority of people who live here. And for those that, and we do it in a way that we have to subsidize to some extent, because otherwise they would be even more expensive. It's true that some people can't afford some of the events, but it's also true that in addition to the symphony, we constantly have those performances in the Halt that are free to people. We have a constant flow of students from our schools coming into the Halt for special access to performances. If you asked our arts and culture folks, they'd give you a big, huge, long list of how to try to create opportunities for everybody to fully participate in the arts and culture of our community. Not perfect, because perfect, I suppose, would be everything's free for everybody all the time, but that's just not doable. But we strive mightily as a community to have not only our arts and culture be representative of who we are as a community, we strive to make it really accessible in many different ways to people in our community. And I'm, personally, I'm actually very proud of the efforts that are made in this community to create that kind of access. I think it's hugely important for the quality of life for everyone in our community. I will point to the vision up here where it says, even though it's not down in our specific goals in the way that you mentioned, but I will say, we state very clearly in the shortest, in the kind of, the most important thing in the way we look at our community, be responsible stewards of our physical assets and natural resources. We will sustain our clean air and water, our beautiful parks and open spaces, livable and safe neighborhoods, and foster a vibrant downtown, including a stable infrastructure. It is very clear here that our vision for our community is that this will be a place that takes care of its environmental assets.
Maybe something that would be helpful in how this connects to our budget. When I look through this list, I see some things on here which I'm thinking, "It might not have a big pri-- not have a big price tag on them. You can just do them. They're the kind of aspiration that don't cost you anything. Other things on here, I look at them and I say, this aspiration has a price tag next to it and it's got some time that we need to be committed to do it. And so for me, this list, I don't have a context for it in terms of how it fits into our budget, how it fits into our operation. So it would be helpful to get an idea of what the relative scale is of what these different items might cost, both in terms of time and money. Because I'm not saying that I'm going to pick or choose based on what's cheap and what's expensive, but if I'm going to take a vacation, I can take a vacation to Mars or I can take a vacation to Crater Lake. And the choice is going to be based on a lot of factors, including how much it's going to cost and how long it's going to take. And so I think it's really helpful for me to know realistically what the time and the expense would be to make substantial progress on all of these. As I say, some of these, you say, we just have to agree to do it differently and boom, you're done, you're there.
Can you give me an idea of what you're talking about? In here?
In terms of no price tag or in terms of anything?
I just examples of what you're discussing.
Decreased property crime. What would it cost and how long would it take to have a significant impact on decreasing property crime? We've done a lot of downtown development. If we wanted to continue to do it, what would that cost? How long would it take? If we were going to no longer do that and do some other kind of development, how long would it take? What would it cost? Strategic job creation. We've talked around it, but what is the price tag for that? How long would it take? What would it cost? Where would we do it? I know Mike's got a lot of ideas around that, but others may have ideas as well. You get down to other things like a long-term sustainable budget. There is a price tag to that, a very significant price tag to that, and we haven't talked about what that price tag is. And we need to talk about the price tag for that because that's influencing a lot of our current budget discussions for how we're going to get out of our deficit hole. Now, accessible and transparent financial information, that may not have a big price tag attached to it, but it does require us to do things a little differently. I would want to know what we need to do and what the time commitment in order to do that would be. Because as I say, this is a list until you start attaching some tangibles to it. I want to know what the tangibles are that are attached to these items so I can begin to evaluate how long, how quickly, how expensive, how effectively we can do them.
Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. I have some comments that aren't so much directed towards the budget because I don't think we can accomplish them in the amount of time there, but maybe something larger, more aspirational, more long-term. I think it's a really healthy and helpful process when people have large-scale disagreements about stuff to sit down and talk about. I think the process of doing that leads to everybody learning more and getting along better and doing better. Betty brings up an interesting point. And I guess parenthetically, on a side, I would say, the mayor often says this and I agree with her, that I think this table does a wonderful job of representing our community. I think there are a lot of people with different values and different views that sit around this table, very diametrically opposed at times, but I think everybody represents at this table a big chunk of our community with their views. So when there is a disagreement, I think it's healthy for us to talk about it when we can because it helps the rest of the community work it through. Betty just said something that's interesting. The purpose of government is to provide for those that can't provide for themselves. Or something, perhaps you said it better and I did a poor job of repeating.
To do the things we can't do by ourselves.
Okay.
Build roads, for example.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you clarifying. My thoughts on it and as well as many people I know is the purpose of government is to protect people's rights. And when we're talking about the goals and vision of our community at a larger level like this, I think that's something that we should talk about and hash out at some point. Because the purpose we're here is, if there's disagreement about why we're actually at the table and what the purpose of city government is, I think that in a larger sense affects how we create this. When I think, I think government exists to protect people's rights, I don't see a lot of that enshrined in our goals and outcomes. And I wish there was more of it. So I guess at a goal-setting session, at a retreat-type setting, I think would be the appropriate one. I'd like to see us have more of a discussion about the purpose of municipal government so that we can get greater clarity. I think it would help the community at large as well.
Mike? Sorry, and around that part of the vision that speaks to me, maybe it doesn't speak to you in the same way. The part of the vision that speaks to me is to value all people, encouraging respect and appreciation for diversity, equity, justice, and the social well-being of all, that we appreciate our differences and embrace our common humanity as a source of our strength. I think that's probably, in my view, a very strong statement about respecting people's And Alan and then Betty.
I was going to say something similar, so I won't say it. I'll just agree. But it spurred another thought, which was, the way this is structured, the way that we put this on paper is the more important things are in big letters and the less important things are in smaller letters. And it's almost the opposite of what it should be. The vision, I think, you almost gloss over it because it's in this little tiny type. And it should be the biggest thing on this page.
Like under a safe community, the vision is a community where all people are safe.
The stuff underneath the vision, the stuff that you've been reading there, I think is the basis for which all of these goals and outcomes flow out. And it seems to be totally be-emphasized. And you know, people didn't even read that, we have be responsible stewards of our physical assets and natural resources, environment. And that should be big and huge and these other things should be, flow out of that. And they're kind of paths to get to this larger vision.
Betty?
I wonder what kind of rights Mike was talking about? The right to sleep or the right to disrobe or the right to say anything you want, the right to be on this terrace out here on Saturday without a fence around it?
Right to fireworks?
Right to walk in the hall.
The right to protest protestors?
The right to be safe from fireworks.
It's all in how you say it, huh?
But I agree that that's part of what we can't do for ourselves. I still say that government exists to do because we can't individually, even rich people can't individually take care of their riches by themselves without government to provide protection. And I was really struck by that rights, but as for the environment, I think there should be something that says protect our, a clear goal to protect the source stream sides and protect the Amazon headwaters, for example, which we're not doing, which is a part of clean water and clean air. And we still haven't done anything to really protect trees and people are cutting down huge trees which help to sequester carbon, help to make our air clean, and we still don't have a really strong tree ordinance. Those are the kinds of things I'm thinking about for the environment. So tell us more about rights when you get on the screen.
This is a little bit off the budget topic, but I think this is one of those moments when we come together and we can talk about something really important for us as a governing body. When I was on the school board, I went to a leadership academy. It was run by a guy in North Carolina who talked about why do we have people like us as elected officials governing and not, God doesn't govern, the king doesn't govern, we don't have professionals and technical people govern, we don't have computers govern, we have people like us govern. And he said, because our job is not to be technically knowledgeable about something. Our job is to balance choices. That's what we do. We balance different things and then we have to make choices. And he had this chart, which just influenced me my entire career, which is called balancing values and choices. And we are on two continuums and we are constantly making choices and decisions between competing elements. And Betty and Mike is exactly one of these continuums.
Competing elements.
We're having to make choices between individual liberty and the equality of many people, between the needs of a community and the prosperity of the individual. And there is no right or wrong on any one of these continuums because every single one of these values is a good one and is a correct one. And the reason why we're sitting here is we're having to decide constantly where we're going to land on any given issue. And you can't do that professionally or technically, you just have to do it like a jury has to do it. And when we look at our goals that we've established for ourselves, it's us explicitly stating where we stand in each one of these areas. Where we stand in the line between community and prosperity, where we stand in the line between individual liberty and equality. And the reason there has to be eight of us doing it is any one of us would land here, but the eight of us have to collectively land in the place where the city of Eugene needs to be. And that's why where we wind up landing is somewhere between Betty and Mike or somewhere between Alan and me or somewhere between Claire and Greg. That's important, that's incredibly important. And these goals are our way we can express that. But we will never get away from this as being the constant struggle we're always in. Every single day, we walk into a meeting, this is where we wind up having to be, where we're going to be on these continuums. And it's been incredibly important to me to keep that in mind as we approach every single decision.
I'm going to bear in mind the Betty and Mike quote. Okay, I've got Claire and then Mike.
Thank you.
Sorry, Betty and Mike.
This is a great conversation and I agree with Councilor Clark that I think it would be, that our dialogue and struggle or however you want to characterize it, it reflects the broader community and it's important for us to have that and I look forward to continuing that conversation. I think it's not an either-or dynamic, as Chris has just pointed out. I think you are correct and Councilor Taylor is correct. And then, you know, my other two cents in terms of what is the function of government is to do the things that private industry is not going to do because there's just no profit motive in it. It's just not, you know, as Alan has pointed out, our parks are, you know, are completely subsidized in terms of how they run economically, but their benefit to the wider community is assumed and so we invest in them as a public body in a way that a private entity would have no interest or value in doing. Out of the goodness of their hearts, exactly, which doesn't speak to their bottom line as an organization either. But that also then, as I was looking through, I also appreciate what Alan was saying about, you know, just how these are presented in terms of font size and emphasis on the page. And then since we started a conversation around Civic Stadium the other night, you know, one other piece I saw that could be enhanced in the culture and recreation piece is viewing also recreation and open space as potential for economic engine. We're looking at that with the skate park and opportunity to build some local business into how we deliver the service that is going to be at the skate park and the value that we're bringing, not only through the public investment, but then we're looking for partnership with private companies as well, local private companies to enhance what's being offered there by the city.
Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. To clarify, much as Betty clarified something that I'd recapped there, I did say protect people's rights, not respect them. And there's a difference in my mind. I appreciate this conversation very much and think, I appreciate what Alan and the rest of all said and Chris giving kind of amplification to what I meant there with the scale of that. It's interesting to me because when Alan brings up the font size and the issue around the vision, I agree 100% with him. The vision statement is one of the most critical. As somebody who professionally helps develop brands with people, you know, that the issue of how you create mission statements and vision statements and stuff, that's very critical. And for me, I don't see reflected in the vision statement, some of what I was trying to capture in saying that the role of government is to protect people's rights. I see a lot of things that value, that are community values there, but less so that are individual values there. And so for me, that vision statement doesn't quite do it. And I think that's an important conversation for us because I agree with him that that's paramount, that's overarching when we develop the rest of it. As an aside there, I would also say that in reference to how you defined what's a community value and some of the things that Claire was saying there, when you say, only the government can keep our parks up, own and keep our parks up, the value there, I think, and I agree with you that that's correct, but I don't think the fact that only government can do that effectively is what I was getting to. I was saying that, for example, having parks is a quality of life issue. When we're budgeting, we should be deciding what's more important because of what the role of government is, quality of life issues or issues of public safety, which is a greater value in the community based on, and that doesn't have as much to do with who can do what as it does, what's the appropriate role of government? What's the appropriate thing that we should be doing as a relative value? So I wanted to make that distinction as well.
So I guess where this comes down to me is one of the reasons that I like the triple bottom line so much is because I always feel like you're being asked to make the wrong choices. That I feel like I want to take care of my environment and my people and I want to have a healthy economy. And I don't want to say that I have to choose one over the other, that I think they all have substantial value to the health of the community and they're all worth working on. You might make choices about what you do in each of those, but I'm not going to say I choose the economy over the environment or the well-being of people. On the other hand, I will recognize that an economy helps people do well and helps us take care of things. So I mean, they're all related and of significant value to me. And I always worry when we get into this prioritization discussion that we think we have to unload one of those. And I think that's just the opposite of what we have a responsibility to do as a government. I think our responsibility is to struggle with trying to bring all of those home to the best of our ability. And frankly, I think we've done a very good job of it in this community. We have natural assets, I mean, we're helped by this state land use policy, no doubt. But we have done a really good job of trying to take care of our natural resources. It's not perfect, we still have things to work on, but we've done a pretty decent job with that. The things that are falling apart to me right now are the social equity pieces and of course, economic pieces. Those things, I mean, that's why we're working on this, that's why we haven't talked very much and somehow, I don't know why, we don't connect the fact that we really do have this regional prosperity plan that has specific things in it that we've been with partners in this community, we've just been going steadily after. That's what resulted in bringing everybody in this community together along with everybody in the Corvallis OSU to go after trying to get us to the next place in our economic development. We've been marching down that road, but I somehow feel like, I don't know if we are all aware that we're marching down that road and working on that all the time. You have always worked on spinning their businesses, we're working on trying to find a place for them to land and to keep them here. That stuff is going on all the time. And we said that this fall, we would try to go to the next level and have a regional prosperity summit number two to say, okay, we've made this much progress, now where do we want to take the, where's the next step going to take us? But it is keeping those pieces together and not letting one go to get to take up another, I think. Betty also got some, George Brown, you got anything you want to say?
No ma'am.
Okay. Betty?
Betty, I can go on for a while, I think.
Don't feel compelled. So I'll go back to you guys. So let me, I'm going to ask...
Are you more confused?
No, I think what I'm going to say is, you have to now say if you, they've heard all the sort of the caveats that you, you don't have to restate them, they've heard those. But is there anything in here that you think is untakeable to the budget committee to help us through this current budget cycle? I'm not seeing anything. I'm not seeing anything. And you've told them the things you'd like sort of added around the edges of this, right, John?
Yeah, no, I think actually it's been a really good and helpful conversation. The next six months, yes and no, but post that, very much so. And so what actually helps is, is we lead into the workshop and after the first of the year, it starts to think about, so are there ways to help frame that workshop that actually allows continuation of the conversation? And also starts thinking about where do we want to focus some energy going forward, given what then is the current reality of all the things we've been doing the last several years? Let's talk about that and then talk about where do we want to go, given that, given this conversation and coming out of that. So actually, it's been very helpful in sort of thinking about that even next conversation.
Well, let me ask you this question. So I think the important thing is that you're headed into this big budget discussion that's going to take a lot and engage the community and all of that. And I, they're not sitting at the table with us having this conversation, so they're just by virtue of the fact they haven't been living this in the same way. They're not going to have the same feel for what our visions and goals mean. So I don't know how we intend to do the best job we can to sort of share that information with them as we understand it right now. But I think if you have hard decisions ahead, it's really important to have this discussion about what matters to this council right now. And how we tee that up in front of the budget conversation, I think is going to be really important. And it will be something that both staff and Budget Committee members who go out to talk to the public will need a sense of where we say we are at this moment and time. So I think it's worth thinking about how you convey through our communications and the way we go about our Budget Committee work, really convey what's in this, on this piece of paper that matters to this council.
On a side note, because this is a process session, I want to bring up something, and I want to do it now, because I don't want it to be colored by bringing it up later after the Budget Committee's met and produced a recommendation. I have for some time thought that it might, I mean, this is my opinion, it might be wiser for us to consider how we appoint Budget Committee members. So I guess I'm going to ask Beth to have a work session poll put out. I have for some time thought it was a good idea for each of us, for us to go back to the model of each of us appointing a Budget Committee member. I've spoken with many of the people at the table, and some are indifferent to that. Several, you know, I think we're actually kind of split on that, and I don't want us to just have a vote where the mayor decides that question at all. So I'd like to see us have a work session, get better information about what it is we did before, and kind of talk about that and think about it a little bit. I would frankly be of the notion to propose a motion to do so, but again, I don't want it to come down as a split vote. So I'm hopeful we can have a work session to talk about that.
Interesting question, because that's what you do at the Sustainability Commission.
Correct.
And so you can reflect on how that feels to you, although it's not the same as the Budget Committee.
Correct. And I know we used to do it that way. I think Alan's proud of saying he was the first, you know, broadly voted on Budget Committee member or something like that at large, rather than the times when we used to do it that way. I think there's benefit considering going back to a single counselor, single appointment model, but I think we should talk about it, so.
No harm in talking about it, it seems to me.
Talking about it's a good idea.
Although fitting it into our schedule's a whole nother subject.
That's a very good point, Mayor, and just so staff knows, I only bring it up now because I don't want to see us go through a budget process, get a result, and then bring that up and have it be some sort of comment on their work. I want to say that upfront. So we know we've been thinking about this for a while. It doesn't have anything to do with anybody that's on Budget Committee right now. That's wise. And, yeah, doesn't have anything to do with that at all.
What did you mean by that?
And so there's certainly no rush, you know? There's no rush in this.
That's good.
We'll put out the poll.
There's also a, part of that needs to be the conversation about, so why did we change? You have to go back and look.
And look at the record.
And how have times changed, and why might it be wiser now? Yeah, absolutely.
Because there were good reasons why I think the council changed that rule.
Claire?
Well, and I would also hope we'd hear about other communities that might appoint that way, and if we're able to get any information about how that works for them, rather than just comparing ourselves to ourselves, but also if there's other bodies in Oregon. Yeah. See kind of what the pros and cons.
Like comparing ourselves to ourselves.
That's a value, but of limited value.
Well, on the one hand.
Anything else for the good of the order?
The good of the order.
Mayor, there is one other item that we have on here. And this has to do with just work sessions themselves. One of the items on this process session is just on how work sessions are taken care of. And it was a pretty strong message that I received several months ago about how we're scheduling work sessions. So we're, I just want to kind of talk about how we're doing some things, a little bit about upfront work, and just kind of make sure people are comfortable where we are. The message that I and we received very much so was concern about the timing of work sessions. And so what we are doing is, as the work session, we've scheduled all the work sessions that were polled. As they come in, what we will do, one is be better at getting them on the agenda quicker than they have been before. What we do take into consideration is the timeliness and the sequencing of things that have to occur. And so while something may get polled and you expect it in January, maybe it's not until February, because we have some things that are of timeliness to put in there. And so I just want to make sure that we heard that, you know that we heard that message clearly. The second piece, I think, I just want to talk about, and it's about sort of the upfront work leading into the work session. And one of the things, George, you do very well, is prepare for work sessions and do a lot of research and prepare a lot of questions as we move into those. What has generally been a practice, I understand, for the council, and while I've been here, but previously, is that if a work session is scheduled, what we do is provide just generally basic information for that work session, and then based on that information, the majority of council directs us to go do some additional work or not, depending on where you're headed with that, which is just slightly different than preparing all of that information upfront. Because what partly happens is it takes a lot of staff time to do that, and if the majority of the council says, "Yes, we want that," absolutely will do it. If the majority of the council says, "Well, we're kind of looking to go in a different way," we've just spent a lot of staff time on something that the majority of the council doesn't want. So what I'm looking for is affirmation or agreement on one way or another on how you want us to spend that staff time ahead of the work sessions.
Agreement, at least up until now, has been the two-hour rule, that a counselor may not individually ask staff to do more than two hours' worth of work without having the agreement by the whole council they want that work done. And if I, if you guys don't change that, that's what currently exists.
And what we would do is, yes, ahead of work sessions, sometimes there's a little bit more work than that, just because it does take a little bit more time sometimes. But that's been our general principle. And so I guess I'm just affirming that or reaffirming that that's where your expectation is of us.
Okay, so I have Mike, Alan, George, and Betty in the queue.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm wondering something else as an additional piece, and it's the follow-up piece, or the after the work session piece. There are many times where we'll do something based on an important issue that isn't necessarily something brought up by staff or driven by a regulation or some other level of government, but an important community issue that one of us will pull for a work session. We'll often end those directing staff to go and do good and come back to us. I've never been really successful at being able to track where staff is with that or when we might expect to see results from that. And I'm just looking for, is there any way we can have communication on that to everybody rather than just one counselor asking, so we have common understanding of when to expect a return to a particular topic? I thought of one that I brought up of Riverone Santa Clara and a comprehensive plan for what do we do? You know, where are we on that? When would we expect that back? And not just for my purpose of knowing.
For everybody.
But so everybody knows when we're going to see that coming back.
Yes, we can do that.
That's cool. Thank you.
Alan?
I had a very similar thing, which was, how do we track things that, when we do have a work session on them, what happens to them? Sometimes they're just kind of going to a black hole and never reemerge. Sometimes they get rescheduled. Sometimes you take action, sometimes you don't. But we don't have a good way of tracking these things. My thought was that some kind of matrix system that says, "Okay, this issue was brought up on this date, here's what we said, and the next steps were this," and then what's the status of that? Good example is, that just came up for me last night at a neighborhood meeting, was the, what are we doing about the onsite management of large apartment complexes? We had a work session on that, and we decided this is something that we wanted to move forward, and we should, we should talk about it again. That was it, a year ago. And it was on the heels of the Capstone project. And so we still haven't done anything with that. Sort of the same thing that Mike, and, you know, the work session we had just recently on, you know, what's going to happen to that? We don't have a good way of tracking where it is and when it should get back into the queue. And I guess answer to that is, so then, we have new things coming on to the queue at the same time we haven't resolved that one. And I guess, you know, that's the, I think that's the, where the mayor and the city manager come together and figure out how that plays out.
We want to share your opinion.
Something that the council does. Yeah, that would be great. All of us could, ten of us could do that real easily. So I think some kind of more formal process about that, so things don't just get lost in the shuffle.
Well, we'll see what we can do about that, yeah.
Okay. George?
And as part of that, if we could, if we could have, just as a general rule, things more transparent, more of our stuff on the council website or on the city's website. Maybe there's a council page where we have all of our stuff. You know, other agencies have, you could just pull up the website and go right into and have all of the stuff that's going on with council, including their agendas and all that kind of stuff. And I think that would help us do a lot of our work, those of us that are more on it.
George, you don't, you really don't want. Okay, Betty?
Thank you. I think what I wanted to say is related to what Mike and Alan have said, but I, about future work sessions, once a work session is approved, I would appreciate having on the newsletter future work sessions, and when they're scheduled, or pending something or postponed because something, just a list of them, and some things so that we know either when they're going to happen or why they're not happening. And I think that would be helpful, because sometimes things do just disappear. And I agree with what Alan said, after we, after we've discussed something too, that update on, that would be good. And there's something else I wanted to say, what, I'll have to ask again.
Something about rights?
Not about rights.
City manager's right.
Yeah, the city manager's right.
Oh, I know, two hours. I wanted to say something about that. I remember when that was instituted, a previous city manager, about three managers back, I think, decided that staff was spending too much time on what individual counselors wanted, and they changed it to two hours unless the council agreed. And I never agreed with that rule myself. I think if any counselor wants to know something, that staff should spend whatever time is required.
You'll have to talk to the rest of council.
I think, I think if that's, it shouldn't be just a two-hour thing. Some things take longer and some take less time. And I just.
A regular job, just do what we want.
And I, you know, I. Kind of a moving target, though, isn't it?
And what we try to do is be responsive, and generally, that first work session, we come back with, here's what the current situation, which is different than sort of moving forward with this, so what do you do from there? And our staff is very busy on a variety of things, many of which you end up seeing here. And so from my perspective, it is important that you collectively direct the work in the sense of, this is what's important for us as a council that we're moving forward on. And so that helps us to focus our energies on those things, which is why it's there.
Well, since that rule came into being, I've seen somebody say, "I want to know about this," and then they say, "Does the rest of the council?" And maybe the rest of the council just doesn't know that they need to know about it. Maybe they don't, maybe they just are opposed to the whole topic, and so they nullify what one counselor needs to know. I think that's too rigid, myself.
But it hasn't come up very often, I know, in the last many years. I think everybody sort of is aware of the intent.
It hasn't come up often, that's why I didn't think of it, till the mayor mentioned it just now. And I thought, no, that's not a good rule, in my opinion.
Yeah, and I pretty much try to remind you that you can't assume that something is so unless you have agreement amongst yourselves, and that's kind of the way it works. So, you know, somebody can bring up something, and then they say, "I said that, and why doesn't that happen?" And then I have to say, "That's because you didn't agree on it as a."
And count to five.
But, no, but the, but knowledge, bringing knowledge to us is something that any individual shouldn't be able to do, I think. That was the same time, I think, as they decided, fortunately, we don't do this anymore, they decided that we could not talk directly to staff. That was a previous manager decision, and I'm glad that that's no longer true. We had to go, we would have had to talk to John first and say, "May I please talk to the fire chief?"
And I would be spending all my time on that, which also wouldn't be appropriate.
So I'm glad we're not doing that anymore.
Chris, you're next, and then Claire.
Perfect example, if it's not what you do, it's how you do it. That's what we're talking about now. It's a really important conversation, because how we do things is how we stay as an effective, functional body. I think we work much more collegially, because we take time to talk about how we do things. I think the notion of getting work sessions scheduled right away, and it would be good to know kind of what's in the pipeline, because if we see a list of work sessions that have been approved, and it's 30 long, it gives us a better sense of, we've got a lot of work sessions here, and do we need to keep adding 10 more? Also, I think the notion of who talks to whom, and when, and how, and time that's spent, it's all part of a larger conversation that has to do with, do you work for eight individuals, or do you work for the city council? And I've always believed you work for the city council, which means you do not work for me. You work for this body, I'm just a part of the body. That gets back to the notion of, then, as an individual counselor, can I tell you what to do? Go find this piece of information out for me. I think it's nice to do it as a courtesy, but I've never considered the city staff under any obligation to do anything for me as an individual, other than out of courtesy or something that's been agreed to on a two-hour rule. That makes, that makes for that weird schizophrenic element, where you are, in one sense, macro-powerful in terms of making major decisions for where the city's going, and micro, weak. I do not have any power at that micro level. I cannot tell any staff member what to do, and I really can't tell you what to do as an individual. I am, I am actually weak, you know, powerless from that standpoint. But that's okay, because the body should be your boss. You'd go crazy working for eight individuals, or even nine individuals, but you can very effectively work for the body. So I think that's why a two-hour rule, I think that's why, when you talk about work sessions, doing that basic level of information gathering for the work session, so that you can then be told by this body what additional work you need to do. It makes perfect sense to me. I don't think any one counselor should have the right or the authority to tell you what to do. Not even mine! Because that would be the basis for a totally non-functional city government. That simply wouldn't work. And I think it was abused before. I've not seen a lot of abuse in the nine years I've been on the council, and I think we should be very grateful for that. And I don't want to slip down that road. I don't think we do. But I think a lot of those were put in place because it was very, very seriously abused in the past, and I don't want to see us fall back into that. But I'm very clear, you work for the body, not for me.
Claire?
Yeah, thanks. I appreciate those comments, Chris. Just on the suggestions from Alan and Mike about tracking information that's. Just on the suggestions from Alan and Mike about tracking information, that'd be very helpful, particularly in my first four, five months on council, I was like, what? We're going to revisit the five cent fee? When did we decide to do that? You know, even when you're part of the process, sometimes it just runs right over you. So, having, you know, clearly laid out where we are, where we're going, is, would be very helpful to just track and be able to tell constituents where we are on certain things. And also, I think a little bit about the work session polls in there too, because maybe a poll doesn't get enough support, and so, it goes away. But we, I don't know if we get told that. So, just knowing how those things are happening and where they're at, I think, would be great. And then, as I said, I appreciate what Chris said about the spending of time. You know, I understand Betty's concern that maybe two hours is an arbitrary time limit, but I just think, what if all eight of us were submitting the number of questions that Councilor Brown has submitted at times to you all, and they were all different questions? To me, that's not an efficient use of our staff and isn't how I want my city government to be running. So, I do, I like your approach, that the initial work session is really to bring up the issue, yet our sense of where we want to go in terms of more follow-up, more information, and then take it from there. I think that's a rational and efficient way to do the work.
The only thing I'd add to that, and this is strictly, I think, that you guys, you know, it's your decision, but sometimes I feel like people vote for work sessions just to be nice. And I just want to say that maybe sometimes you want to think about, is that, given the big, long list of to-dos, whether there are some things that you really don't, it shouldn't think you're being un-nice if you don't say, I think that's something worth talking about. So, I just, it's just a matter of using the time you have.
You know, another thing on that might be helpful is, if you'd like to have the work session, but it's not timely for you, maybe just say that, that, you know, if you have the work session sometime in the next six months, I'm okay with that. Because then we, it's helpful to schedule, so we don't necessarily schedule it ahead of something.
To do it ASAP, and who --
Right, so.
Sub-question.
Yeah, so if, yeah, sort of it's, and it doesn't have to be, you don't have to say, yes, it's urgent, but maybe it's just a, if you don't say, hey, it's fine to schedule in six months, we'll just kind of put it in the queue earlier than later. But if it's not urgent, just, we can say that, and then it's easier to schedule.
Level of urgency.
Yeah, so that'd be good.
Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. I can say, first of all, I don't think you have to worry, because I don't think I've ever voted for a work session that I didn't want to have. I don't think I've ever done it to be nice. I really don't. Go ahead, teed you up.
I would accuse of being nice.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I teed you up for that.
That's an interesting way to put it.
I think what we've just said is really important.
He was doing nice. That's great.
Yes. I think what we've just said is really important for Beth and for everybody, because that could be an additional place on the form that says, you know, do you vote yes or no? But, and is this urgent to you? And each counselor can indicate whether they think it's urgent or not, and have a sense of the body's sense of where they'd like to see timing. I think that's important, yeah. The other piece would be that, there was once a time when we would get an email reflecting the results of a work session poll, of any work session poll. I think that was, I don't know this for a fact, I think it's probably discontinued, because several of us often don't respond to work session polls.
Could be true.
And I have, I just want to reiterate that it is my assumption, my recollection, that a non-response is the same, is equal to a no.
A yes.
It's not being --
No.
It's not a yes, yeah.
Okay.
It's not as emphatic.
It's, but I guess I throw that out there so that Beth is aware if everybody agrees with that or doesn't. Because then you can, you can list who responded and how they voted.
Betty's going to pop here if she doesn't get a say.
It's okay, Betty.
No, it isn't okay. No, just because Mike said that, does Beth have to do it? He's only one person.
That's right.
True.
Which reminds me of the other thing I was going to say.
And I think we have been informed of what happened, and I think everybody, I, one thing I would appreciate, and I'm not, I'm not demanding this, is that when we get a thing, well, actually, we've been getting this part of the time, if we get asked to vote on something, if we've already done it, if we're told that we've already done it, because sometimes I think, did I or not? But I think everybody should vote either yes or no on a work session. And we don't know if you just didn't get the email, or if you forgot it, or --
Actually, that's a good point.
Sometimes email gets, it goes somewhere, I don't know to --
It's like kind of an obligation. Yes, George?
Well, I mean, you know, just recently, Chris Block has sent reminders to everybody about who, which ballots she's received from, you know, we had some updates to human rights and all that, you know, and who did. They didn't say how people voted, whether they approved or not, but she's mentioned who has responded and who has not. And that, and she'll do that after about a week or so, or 10 days, when she doesn't get responses from people. And so, irregular about that, actually. I mean, there may have been a couple that she missed. And so, you know, if you don't vote, for whatever reason, maybe you just forgot, or, I mean, I think if you don't vote, then your vote doesn't count, I mean, either way. It's got to be yes or no.
I think the point is, you, it isn't, the way you have it set up is, you have to have a certain number of affirmative votes to have a work session. So, it doesn't matter how many of you respond, you don't get a work session unless you get that number of affirmative responses, right?
Right.
So, the outcome's the same.
Same, but without the, I voted no thing. No, you didn't vote no, but the person didn't get enough or got enough, even if you didn't vote, so.
Right.
Great, and I agree with that. I think it's okay not to vote to basically stand it. And it shouldn't show up as a no vote, it's, you didn't.
Take a position.
It might not be nice.
It's the only place we can abstain.
You just didn't want to be nice. You didn't want to be objectionable either. So, I think that's, sometimes that's fine, to be able to do that. You still need to get to four yes votes to get a work session.
Either way.
It doesn't really matter that much. You didn't get four, you didn't get four regardless, unless, you know, someone just completely --
Unless Mike didn't get the email and he wanted to vote for it.
Just one more brief thing, I mean, you know, if I, there have been a few work session requests that I voted against, but I usually provided the courtesy of explaining why, or, you know, why. But I thought, you know, well, this is neat, but we didn't, well, we already kind of made a decision, and maybe we'll hear and let it, you know, I'll usually offer, which the counselor who proposed it may accept or not, but at least I feel, hey, if I'm going to vote against your idea, I think you deserve the courtesy of an --
That's good.
And then there, I admit, there have been a couple times where I just simply, it flew past me and I forgot, and I didn't respond, you know, which wasn't necessarily a rejection or, I guess it was just unintentional abstention.
Well, remind her email, that, you know, this poll is still pending, is a good idea. Why don't we get those?
Yeah, we do get those. Often it's a flurry of votes.
So, I think, are we, are --
That's it for us.
So, we have a request, you received an email, some of you remember it and some of you don't, that you stay after a bit today, because they want to talk to us about how we would, what we would do in the case of an emergency. So, maybe we can --
This is only a test.
It might not be the best way.
So, are we doing that while we're on or while we're off?
No.
Okay, so, we're going to end the meeting, and then we're done.
Thank you very much.